Please stand and pledge allegiance. After you pledge, please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, united as one with liberty and justice for all.
The other night at the retirement and recognition ceremony, I met an employee who has been with the district for 15 years in the transportation department. I also learned that he was a Penrich graduate of the class of 1973, and then finally learned through Dr. Thompson that he is also an excellent singer. So I asked Mr. Dave Bash if he would come tonight and lead the singing of the national anthem. So, Mr. Bash, thank you for being here.
Oh, say have you seen when the dawn thoroughly light was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mr. Bash, thank you so much. That was wonderful. We really appreciate your leading us. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Vance Clemens?
Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mrs. Dolan?
Here.
Ms. Kogary?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Dr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Walters?
Here.
Dr. Yornell?
Here.
Okay, next we have public comment. The Penrich School Board welcomes public comment. According to Policy 903, we remind everyone of the following: Public comments shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the Board. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and with their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer rather than to individual Board members, district employees, or members of the public. A speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please note that these sessions are designated for comments. To protect confidentiality and privacy rights of all members of our community, the Board encourages members of the public to direct any comments regarding particular individuals, such as students or district employees, privately to the superintendent or other appropriate administrators or Board members, or to communicate with the Board and superintendent privately by sending an email to psdschoolboard@penrich.org. Questions raised in that address may be followed up at a later time. Okay, first up we have Delaney Denton.
There's something right here. It's a little piece. Okay. Hi, my name's Delaney Denton, and I run varsity cross-country track for Penrich. So recently it's come to the attention of me and other female athletes at Penrich that there's an outdated and sexist rule that exists. We allow our male athletes to have the opportunity to have a choice whether or not they get to work out in a shirt or not. Female athletes do not have the opportunity to choose whether they get to choice of working out in a shirt or if their sports bra. My first reason why we should abolish this rule and promote equality at Penrich is because this is sexist. The dictionary definition of sexism is discrimination because of gender. Penrich claims to be... On Penrich's website, it says, "All students should be able to attain the skills necessary to successfully compete in the 21st century global stage." In the 21st century, we put emphasis on equality, and by promoting something that discriminates against a girl and a boy, that's not promoting that 21st century success. Also, we allow our males to have the choice whether or not they get to work out in what they feel comfortable in. And I like being part of Penrich, but I think in order to make Penrich a great school, we need to improve upon this and allow this progress to happen. In recent years, body positivity movements have come such a long way. You see more diversity, and girls are more encouraged to embrace what makes them feel comfortable. So, this rule kind of makes girls feel ashamed of how they look. One thing one of my teammates said that stuck with me for a while is, "What is so wrong about my body that Penrich thinks it needs to be covered up?" This is teenagers saying next to someone. And I think it's really upsetting that a girl thinks that the school doesn't want her to feel comfortable. And also, it inhibits a girl's ability to make their own choices based off of their own comfort. And this brings me to my next subject: comfort. When you're running seven miles in the blistering September sun, it's not easy. And sometimes, running in that sports bra can provide just such a large level of relief. Whether you are doing stunts of cheer, scoring field hockey, practicing your kicks of soccer, or running across country, it's hard work. And girls should be allowed to make their own choices so then they feel comfortable, and they worry about what they're doing in practice and not how their body's feeling because of what they're wearing. So, a few people did address some concerns, and it's that some people argue that this will distract our male athletes, which is actually a pretty sexist generalization. I can guarantee you that our male athletes will be too busy worrying about what they're doing at their practice to worry about who's in a sports bra. Another thing is that people supposedly will supposedly sexualize our female athletes. If Penrich is the 21st century environment that I know it to be, it would teach our girls... It will teach everyone in our area to respect women, respect their bodies, and respect their choices regardless of what they're wearing.
Ms. Denton, you've done a wonderful job of expressing yourself, but we keep everyone with three points.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just sum up?
Um, I did take a poll, and out of almost 200 people, 90% of them greeted me, and they were high school students. And at both CBEs and CB West, other schools in our area, they do allow girls to do this. I'm incredibly proud that I get to represent our school both on and off the track in cross-country course, and I'm incredibly happy that I got the chance to share this with you. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Delaney. You were well-prepared and did a great job. And we'll respond to all of the comments at the end.
Thank you.
Next up is Tina Gerhardt.
Hi, I'm Tina Gerhardt. I'm from Bedminster. I wanted to ask the Board about implementing a social media protocol for everyone that's involved in our district. Right now, I have a couple of questions about what we do. The district's Facebook page, I'm curious who all has access to be an admin for that. I've found that there's been different people posting on there, which, no problems. I'm not here to complain about that. So far, there's nothing questionable. But there should be a policy implemented for that. It is not in the interest of the district to have Board members... Want only one Board member have access to the Facebook page. It should be done by a hired administration. It's an election year, and not that this has happened, I'm not making any accusations of it, but it would be very easy for somebody who is up for reelection to sit there and be able to do some self-promoting that maybe another person that's up for election already on the Board wouldn't have access to do. That's my first part of it, is the Facebook account. And my second question is about conduct for personal social media. So, the district has an electronic communication policy that electronic communication with students should be legitimate, educational reasons only. I know that the Board does not have the same requirements, but it should. There's also a social interaction policy. So, under the social interaction, there are examples of prohibited conduct that violates professional boundaries, which includes, but is not limited to: singling out a particular student or students for personal attention, friendship, or anything beyond a normal, ordinary adult-student relationship; initiating and extending contact with a student beyond the school day or outside of the class times without a legitimate educational reason; telling or sharing personal secrets with a student; and also prohibitive is for adults who are not on the guidance counseling staff, school psychologists, social workers, who have been designated responsibilities to counsel students; encourage students to confide in their personal family problems or relationships. If a student initiates such discussion, the student should be referred to the appropriate school resources. So, we have school resources, and I know that a lot of times when we think we're helping people, we can actually be putting them at risk and at harm. So, these same guidelines should be implemented for the Board. It should be all part of what you guys do. It shouldn't be up for debate. It shouldn't be a question. And I hope that the Board would, you know, make a rule that, you know, there is no interactions with students on social media. And they may be subject to the same disciplinary action as anyone else that's employed at the district. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from guests?
Ms. Denton, I want to thank you. This was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago by a couple of students on the track team, I believe probably also cross-country. I've asked Mr. Bab, our athletic director, to actually poll the Bucks County and Montgomery County school districts to see where they are on this issue, to see what information they use and what their policies are. Because actually, our current policy is that the boys are not supposed to be running without their shirts on as well. We've reminded all of our coaches of that. And so, I'm not saying that it didn't happen. What I'm saying is our policy actually is that no one should be running shirtless. But I've asked Mr. Bab to look at the other districts to see what they're currently doing, and we will then address that for the next school season.
And if you have some people ask for comments in the class, may they chat with their coaches?
And so, Mr. Bab will have all that information. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up is the President's Report.
The Upper Bucks County Technical School's pre-Swiss cheese robot, so named for what they thought would be inevitable damage and holes by the end, won three rounds before ultimately winning the 2019 Liberty Bots Revolution Competition. They also won the Coolest Robot Award, which was decided by all participants in the competition. Amazing job by students and a great testament to the success of our mechatronics program. I do have a great video, but I can't get it to go up anywhere because it's too big. So, we'll have to find a way to share it. I think the tech school is going to try to find a way to share it so you can see their robot destroy the other robots. Tonight, the Board will be voting on the first balanced budget in at least 20 years. With no tax increase, no borrowing from fund balance, we're taking on new debt. We are moving into the second year of our six-year capital projects plan that prioritizes our needs and bridges the gap to when our debt will start to drop. First by $6 million annually and up to $13 million annually. This will also... This will allow us to pay for large expenses as we go instead of stacking the debt out and wasting millions on interest. The plan funds upkeep of all facilities, adds air conditioning to large spaces in the elementary schools, and includes regrading the grass fields at all schools to provide more opportunities to more students. This is the third consecutive year with no tax increase, which is three of only five times in the last 20 years. We also did not use any of the fund balance that had been earmarked last year for the budget and saw a decrease averaging $5,000 per month, $60,000 per year on more efficient and effective legal counsel. Based on the makeup of these bills, we're likely to see that difference be even greater in the future. All of this while adding the STEM special to the elementary school, settling fair long-term contracts with staff, increasing funding to the Upper Bucks County Technical School, cutting administrative overhead, and increasing support to the classroom. The number of supervisors were reduced to provide a continuous curriculum flow from K to 12, with additional supports and aids being added to the classrooms to best meet the individual needs of students and allow for collaboration. Our professional development continues to become more individualized to best meet the needs of teachers and prioritize high-quality educators. We added one-way kindergarten busing, expanded the kindergarten day, increased safety, and also counseling, psychologists, and, you know, additional personnel that we talked about last week. The budget is a key example of prioritizing the well-rounded education that meets the individual needs of all students and enables students to thrive in academics, athletics, music, the arts, woodworking, and the trades throughout the technical school, while providing staff with the tools they need to be successful, reducing nonessential costs, and working within our means with long-term financial planning that eliminates the need to raise taxes or borrow money for the foreseeable future. We can see the results of this every day as we witness students soar to new heights in all areas. This is a great collaborative effort between our administration and our Board, and we're proud of all the hard work that everybody puts into this and the success that we're seeing for our students and our teachers and our staff. Thank you.
And next up is the Superintendent's Report. Oh, sorry, the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Vance Clemens. First off, tonight, I have two groups of students that I'd like to recognize for some extraordinary work over the last month or so. The first is the group from Minithon. Most of you know the Thon from Penn State. Penrich is a very active and a very successful Minithon program. So, I have lots of nice things to say about them, but I know they're going to say some things about themselves. So, I'm going to let them speak first. So, there are two advisors. Mr. David Brown is not able to be here tonight. Ms. Angela Shuttle, who is going to be here. So, Ms. Shuttle, if you could come forward with your students. Tell us a little bit about Minithon. We'd appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Angela Shuttle. I'm a teacher here at the high school, one of the advisors for Penrich Minithon. As Dr. Bolton said, my co-advisor, David Brown, couldn't be here tonight. First of all, thank you, Dr. Bolton, and thank you, School Board, for inviting us to be here tonight. I know the students are very excited to talk to you guys about some things that are very near and dear to our hearts. They'll be talking to you about our annual Penrich Minithon event, which just finished up its fifth year. So, the students that you see up here are part of our executive committee. Penrich Minithon has a lot of moving parts that the two of our students are going to talk to you about. And this event is very much student-driven. Mr. Brown and I, as we tell the kids all the time, we really are just facilitators and try to help them have their vision kind of come to life and be implemented each year at our event. So, the two students that are going to talk to you tonight are our overall chairs, and that's Mitch Wagner and Abby Coza. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mitch first, and he'll talk to you about the event.
Every three minutes, somewhere in the world, a family hears the devastating words, "Your child has cancer." We are Penrich Minithon, and our mission is to conquer childhood cancer. Hello, everyone. My name is Mitch Wagner. I'm Ms. Shuttle, and I'm one of the overall chairs for Minithon. We're here today to share the impact of Penrich students that were meeting. I'd like to start off by informing you a little bit about what our organization exactly does, just in case you haven't heard about us before. We're a student-led club at the high school, and we raise money each year to support an organization named Four Diamonds. They're tackling childhood cancer through the funding of patient care at Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital. In addition, they're paving the way for innovative research towards new treatment options and ultimately a cure. Throughout the entirety of the year, our whole team and all of our committees work hard to hold a variety of fundraising events. Just some of these included Ball for a Cause, which was a basketball and GAGA tour myth. We had multiple restaurant nights. And then, of course, in September, we had the Gold Out Football Game, which I'm sure a lot of you might remember. In the works for next school year, we have September 27th set for Gold Out. And for the first time, we'll also be holding a color round, which is set for October 5th. Both of these events are completely open to the community, and our goal is to have it advertised to all families in the district. Annually, Penrich Minithon hosts a no-sitting dance marathon event based on the same principles as Penn State's Thon. And this year, it was on April 27th, which was a few weeks ago. Almost 450 high school students participated in this nine-day fun... nine-hour day of fun, and it wraps up all of our smaller fundraising events. What's super special about this day is that students from all four grade levels come together to support the same mission. Our main event was jam-packed with activities. In the white gym, we had pep rally-style games such as tug-of-war, steal the bacon, and extreme musical hoops, inflatables, GAGA pits, and lawn games filled with green chew. And then, we also had some vendors, raffles, and photo booths. Each hour on the hour, participants gathered to participate in a line dance to a mix of music. And the symbolism here is really that we're uniting everyone in support of the kids in the white gym. From 3:00 to 5:00, we invited the Penrich community to visit us and participate in all this fun. And we saw a lot of middle schoolers from north and families of the participants and teachers. At the end of the night, the final two hours are devoted to an awesome dance party right before we reveal the total. In 2019, Penrich Minithon is proud to have raised over $52,000 for the kids. And over the past five years that our club has existed, we've raised over $200,000. A special thank you goes out to all of our student participants, team members, advisors, chaperones, and community sponsors and community members who visited us. Our 2018-2019 efforts were a great success thanks to all of your help. I'm going to hand it off now to Abby Coza. She's our other overall chair, and she's going to share a story of her personal group in Minithon.
Hello. As Mitch said, I am Abby Coza, and I'm the other overall. I think the importance of Minithon isn't just the money that we get, but the community it brings to the school. And to show you that, or I guess to tell you that, I've kind of prepared my own little story of my own experience in the program. So, freshman year, I was in the line dance committee and was already super excited to be a part of Minithon. The first game of the event was musical chairs, and I was pumped. Round after round, I sprinted to open seats and rushed to sit down to stand the game. Admittedly, I'm a bit competitive, until one round where I sprinted to a last open seat, practically slide-tackled the girl next to me, and when I sat down, there was no chair to catch me. Indeed, I was out and injured. As it turned out, I completely tore the ACL of my right knee. However, the pain I felt from the injury, or disappointment I felt for not being able to participate is not what I think about when I look back at that day. Instead, I think of all of the people who stopped and checked in on me at the nurses' station. I see how complete strangers offered to roll me around in a wheelchair or asked if I needed any help. I saw how Penrich Minithon, an event that raises awareness and money for a foundation that battles childhood cancer, brought together all grades at Penrich High School in a mutual drive to help others and support people in need. At the event that day, I realized just how amazing and unique Minithon it truly is. I stayed at the high school for six and a half hours after I was injured, hobbling around in a wheelchair and crutches with a smile on my face and a Four Diamonds tattoo on my cheek. I insisted that the greater cause of fighting childhood cancer was much bigger than my own injury. While I could go home and rest, many children battling childhood cancer don't have that option. They're instead confined to hospital and treatment rooms trying to get better. I stayed for them, staying as much as physically possible and even doing the line dance on crutches. Through Minithon, I hoped to repay the kindness that others showed me freshman year by making the event the best it can be and giving back to the real children in need, those fighting childhood cancer. Thank you.
Is the video an annual thing that we're about to see, or is that only done this year? Anyone in the room responsible for this video? Okay, we're going to watch it anyway. Every year, they produce a Minithon, and so they're going to be the big reveal in terms of the amount of money that they've raised. This year, we're going to show you that. Board members, it is in the Superintendent's Report. You should be able to just simply press play. Please make sure your computers are on mute because it'll mess with the sound in the hall. So, Ms. Dixon, if you could play a horseback.
Does anybody have any questions about Minithon? About how it works or what we do? Are kids allowed to answer any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. The leadership skills that I saw from your group at Minithon were exceptional. And you came up and were giving community members guidance. and helping them know where to go and what times things were going on, and just really took the reins. And so it was a really proud moment. So thank you for that, and good job.
We're going to have to fold a couple of rows. Five, five and under. How are you, Ms. Cooper? Can you get us?
Hold on.
All right. Mitch, remind me again, over $200,000, is that what you said?
Over five years, yes.
Over five years, that's awesome. Thank you all very much. The other group we have here this evening also recently had their time in the sun. This is our Technology Student Association, or TSA. So Mr. Hank Ward, who is the advisor for TSA, is actually donating his time at another charity this evening. He's not able to be here. He didn't provide a write-off for it. So recently, we had 14 students who competed at the TSA State Conference, which was in April. There are 105 school districts that compete in 45 different events. For the first time ever, every student in Penridge placed either with a trophy or a finalist pin. So the first time ever, all 14 of our students, and most of them, did so in more than one event, from that standpoint, in terms of where they won. So we need to congratulate all of them for that effort. In addition, two of our students, Chris McKinney and Michelle Taylor, would you two stand up? You both hear Chris and Michelle. They're going to represent the state of Pennsylvania in the structural engineering category at the National Conference in Washington, DC. And I think I heard you say, Michelle, that it's the end of June, June 29th, or so that you go to Washington, DC. They also have received, if they choose to accept it, a $15,000 a year scholarship from Jefferson University. So let's congratulate these two. Congratulations. School board members, I forgot to tell you that you can be following along in the pictures over the column that the crowd can see under Board Presentation Superintendent's Report. There. So next, I would ask that you would join us for the High School Art Show. This event is special because it's the first Penridge event I attended last year after I had been named superintendent. I wasn't official yet, but I had been through the process and knew that I had been offered the job. And so it is this Thursday night, May 16th. It is from 6:00 to 9:00 o'clock, and it is here in the entire high school lobby and down into the audience. You will not be disappointed. It is the work of our AP art students, our Advanced Wood students, and all those students in all of our classes. That way, it is just an amazing night to be able to have that. So. Next, I want to recognize a lovely evening. Recently, congratulations to three of our staff members, Ellen Andricites, Mary Lou Ashworth, and Maria Huff, who were named the Penridge Community Education Foundation 2019 Friends of Education. These three staff members have had 88 years of service and dedication to the students of Penridge. In addition to the awards ceremony, a lovely evening is in fact that, and includes performances by the Penridge High School String Ensemble, the Jazz Band, the Chamber Choir, the Fumadas, which is a most female acapella group, and this year, there were selections from the Stars' presentation of Cinderella. We're really appreciative of our community partnership with PCF and thank them for being able to recognize our staff members. Next, I want to make you aware of the Thousand Flower Project. Penridge High School was included as one of the Thousand Flowers Project. This mural is designed by Tim Gibson. And this one that you're looking at, which I'll tell you where it is because it's very close to us right now, is the sixth one in the series. So this mural, if you go down, if you go out and go left to the next hallway to the left of the LGI, it is down that in what they call Central Boulevard. And you can see there from that piece. So what's going to happen is Mr. Gibson is looking to get 1,000 different schools or community organizations that are willing to have this mural. At the beginning of the mural, it shows where it connects to. And at the end, it then will show where it connects to next. So whoever the seventh mural is, their name will be at the end of our mural. The original mural is in Sellersville. And so once there are 999 of them, he will come back and paint the final destination on the Sellersville mural for the thousandth mural. And so this was all students and staff who gave their time, heard of this, had the artist come in, and then they painted on the walls. And then the artist came back the next day to kind of do the finishing touches from that standpoint. It really is beautiful. Want to congratulate eight of our Penridge High School students who attended the annual Bucks County Intermediate Unit Employability Expo. They experienced putting together resumes, participated in mock job interviews, and had breakout sessions with over 30 community businesses and organizations. It was an excellent opportunity for students to gain skills for competitive integrated employment. And I'd like to congratulate Kevin, Aiden, Avery, Robert, Angel, Ally, Connor, and Olivia, as well as Mr. Ware, Mrs. Scanlon, Mrs. Gertz-Erger, and the entire Bucks County IU. Congratulations. Want to also recognize last week that we had a Years of Service recognition and our retirement celebration. There were 83 employees who were recognized for serving Penridge for either 15, 20, 25, 30, or 35 years. We had four employees who were celebrating their 35th anniversary with Penridge. That's Mary Lou Ashworth, Sharon Hendricks, Carol Hurstein, and Colleen Trogger. We have 25 retirees this year. And I'm a little bit of a math geek, so I told them that night that they have served for 474 years, which is 85,794 days and over 600,000 student hours. Calculating the impact that they had on their students by estimating how many students they had a year, we realized that these 25 employees have had the direct impact, a direct impact, on 72,825 students. We talked about how the ripples in the pond and that those 72, almost 73,000 students are their impact. Leading the way, Ms. Pearl Oswald, she definitely led the parade. She was retiring after 43 years in the transportation department. So congratulations to all of our retirees and those with special years of service. On another note, I'd like to recognize one of the board members, Dr. Sherry Thompson. And I say "Dr. Sherry Thompson" because she has just recently successfully defended her dissertation. So congratulations. We've had a wonderful season of spring concerts. The choir, the band, and the orchestra has been a wonderful season to be able to enjoy great music. And I'm going to encourage you to find those again in the winter when they are celebrated. Had a really wonderful time last week with Mother's Day celebration. I'm assuming it's the picture you're looking at. It doesn't get much cuter than that. It's a cute picture, Ms. Cooper. That is like one of my favorite pictures. They sang two songs to their mom. This is our childcare program where we have a preschool where our students lead a preschool. They actually have three groups of students who come in for about 90 minutes a day. And then they lead them through the activities. And this was one of the activities they had where the moms could come in. The kids sang songs, made little flower pots. It was all-out cute. And it was really good food, too, to my sandwich. But it was fun for both the big kids and the little kids. I think I have some pictures of the bots, although that was covered. For those of you who have ever seen Battle of the Bots, that's what this was. And so this was the Megatronics group that won. And is Swiss cheese up there? Was there a picture?
It's just the guys.
No, just the guys. All right. Well, you'll have to go to our website to see a picture of Swiss cheese. It was quite, quite a weapon that they unleashed on the rest of the competition. I'd like to recognize our students against Disruptive Decisions, or SAD. Congratulations to Bobby Grishir, Gunner Orth, Christian Hengy, and Ethan Seville, who were voted the winners of this year's Teen Driver Safety Video Public Service Announcement Challenge. There were 12 different Bucks County high schools who submitted a competition for a 30-second PSA, and it was our students who won. They were just recently recognized in the newspaper. So congratulations to those four students. Next, I'd like to put another plug in for 21st Century Learning Night. So Dr. Shag, we're going to switch PowerPoint presentations. And why we do that, if you would just let us know about 21st Century Learning Night that's coming up.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fulton. We would like to invite the entire community to our fifth annual 21st Century Learning Night, May 28th, from 6:30 to 8:30, right here at the high school. We'll be on the first floor and the second floor. And you'll have a chance to join us to see how our Penridge students are leveraging technology to innovate and create and problem-solve. It is such a wonderful event, and we have community partners who donate for our raffle each year, which makes it a lot of fun. There'll be lots of different prizes. There'll be fun. There'll be learning. There'll be a night of learning, and we hope that you all can join us. Thank you.
I believe one of the slides was the community partners. Was that true? I'm just always impressed by the number of... This was the second event that I attended last year. Once I know it never. All right. We're done down my trip down memory lane. The last thing that I have for you today is just to share another video with you. Last week, we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week as well as Nurses Appreciation Day on Monday. I said last year in my community forum that I think the two most important jobs when it comes to impact on children is parents, and second would be teachers. And so we wanted to put together a video this year that we shared with the community as well as the teachers to simply thank you, thank them. So I just wanted to show you the video that we prepared and shared with them last week. Happy Teacher Appreciation Day. On behalf of the entire Penridge community, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to our students. I was recently reminded of the tremendous impact you have every day when I was attending an event where three Penridge staff members were being recognized. One of those being recognized was a Penridge High School teacher who spoke about his passion for teaching and for his students. He summed it up so well by saying, "The passion of a teacher is sharing what you love with a student." He is so right. And I have witnessed that passion in so many classrooms during my first year in Penridge. You have my deepest appreciation. But more importantly, I wanted you to hear from some of those who are the real why of your dedication. Thank you for your hard work every day.
Thank you. You're awesome. Women teachers are the best. No other teacher compares to them right there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, women teachers, for everything you do. And I wish one day we can help you for all the work that you do to help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're the best teacher ever.
Thank you so much to all of our teachers. Have a great year, you guys.
Have a great day. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, teachers. You and us people have a life.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your teachers. You guys are amazing. And I would like to thank you for everything you do. Great and special videos.
Thank you, teachers.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Kids are just cute. And I hate my voice on tape, but that's okay. I also want to thank Ms. Kelly Cooper. We have introduced our new Communications and Public Relations Coordinator. That was the first video montage that Ms. Cooper has done. So thank you very much for your work, Kelly. We appreciate it. And that is the superintendent's report.
And just another reminder, on May 29th, we have our Core Littoral Concert. So you can, you know, get to see them at once instead of, you know, if you missed it the first time, which is great because they're really talented. And... Next up is the Student Liaison Report.
Hello. My name is Brooklyn Hudson. And I am a company here with Ada McGinnis. And we are student council representatives here at the high school. So we've had a busy few weeks here and kicking off on April 11th with our annual blood drive, which collected 76 units of blood. Later that day, we held a semi-annual Miss Penridge, raising over $3,500 for the Student Life Skills Program.
Now for Part Two. Last week's student council volunteered at Pearl's Buck International Student Party along with celebrating a great professional and support staff with water bottles and breakfast. This week, we are conducting elections for next year's pollsters along with volunteering at South Medical School and the Pearl's Buck House for each of their respective events.
Hi, I'm Haley Freyball. I'm from Upper Bucks Central School. And I have just some information that I gathered this past morning. To start from healthcare careers, we had our spring blood drive. On May 8th, we had saved 271 lives. We also have the Upper Bucks Tech Catering. You can go to our website for menu spend prices. My Payments Plus, which is an online service that provides you the convenience and information you need to manage your students' email account. You can visit the ABCTS website for more details. And lastly, the Senior Nights Celebration, which is a tech school graduation, which is on June 3rd at Sophia and Henry School.
Okay, next is the approval of the consent calendar. I'll move to approve items A through I. Questions or comments for board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. And next, we have Committee Reports, Activities, Mrs. Walters.
Thank you. The Activities Committee met on April 29th. We discussed an international trip to Costa Rica and Panama for the summer of 2020. We also discussed overnight trips that the high school students will be taking next school year. The skiing board trip to Park City, Utah, ski and snowboard trips to Burlington, Vermont, and another one to Killington, Vermont. We also discussed the Leadership Conference in Johnstown, PA, and the Beaver Run Baseball Trip to Dingman's Ferry. I would like to, before we approve, before I make a motion to approve the overnight trips, I wanted to table the international trip to Costa Rica and Panama. The Policy 231 states that the board cannot and will not sanction foreign travel nor endorse teacher involvement as trip sponsors and/or chaperones. So I want to make it clear that in our committee meeting, the board was in support of this trip. And to the best of my knowledge, we are still very much in support of the trip, but we need to update our policy before we vote on it. Okay, so I'll second that. Questions or comments for board members?
Do you know how that would affect, is it going to have any effect on them being able to schedule the trip?
As soon as we discovered the conflict, I emailed Dr. Price and asked him to follow up with the chaperones for the trips to see what the timing is. So I don't know tonight.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. Let's table.
Okay, so now I'll make a motion to approve the other trips. I'll just read them since we tabled the Costa Rica trip, the overnight ski and snowboard trip to Park City, Utah, the overnight ski and snowboard trip to Burlington, Vermont, the overnight ski and snowboard trip to Rutland, Killington, Vermont, the overnight trip for the Leadership Conference to Johnstown, PA, and the overnight Beaver Run Baseball Trip.
Questions or comments for board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. Okay, and there are no more scheduled Activities Committee meetings for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year. So we'll see you all again in the fall.
Wait, Mrs. Ainsworth, I'm sorry. I have the PMA couldn't be here tonight, so they gave me their check. They're making payments on their trailer. So I have a check for $1,000 that represents their next payment. I'm not sure if we should do it in Activities or Finance, so we're doing it in Activities.
Okay, next is the Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Cullen.
Thank you. The Curriculum Committee met the other night on May 6th. We don't have any motions to approve for tonight. We talked about dual enrollment. We had a nice presentation by a Bucks County... or Dr. Rodney Outmont, who was from Bucks County Community College. And if you're going to get to see it, it is available online. So he's very excited about the opportunities for dual enrollment. And we're very excited to have it continue to expand. So that was something, one of the discussions. And we also discussed the summer reading. They're going to take a different kind of tack this year, going away from the genre study to having books for the... study to having books for the individual grazing courses. And the next Curriculum Committee meeting is scheduled for June 10th. Dr. Shai, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I don't think so, Mrs. Cullen, we didn't have any motions, but I am also very excited about working with Bucks County Community College and other universities to offer opportunities for dual enrollment for our high school students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Facilities, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you. The Facilities Committee met on May 7th, where we reviewed some obsolete items that we'll have a motion on in a few moments. The home and school, requesting approval for the purchase of playground equipment at Siler, and the bus bid, seeking bids for the bus bids. So just a quick note on the bus bids from that meeting. This is continuing the program that Mr. Geiger had started to replace our bus fleet and modernize the equipment to bring us safer, more reliable equipment. So this is another round of that. This is for replacement of 10 buses with a budget of $850,000. So with that, we'll move into the motions. So I have a motion to approve obsolete items listed A through D.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments for board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. The next item is a motion to approve the home and school to purchase and install playground equipment at Siler Elementary.
Seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Questions or comments from board members? I would just like to comment that we still haven't gotten a picture of him kissing a pig, so I'm still waiting for that. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. The next item is a motion to seek bids for the new school buses for the 2019-2020 year.
Questions or comments for board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries one zero.
Thank you. The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for...
Nine zero.
The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 11th.
Okay, next is the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met on May 7th. And first, we have the Approval of Contracts. I'm going to make a motion to approve Contracts A through N. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments for board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I will make a motion to approve the PSBA membership renewal. I'll second. For 2019-2020, in the amount of $15,840.42. Seconded by Dr. Thompson. Questions or comments for board members?
Every year, I just like to emphasize how it's not just a school board association membership that benefits the school board, but... Mr. Dolber, can you explain for everyone again the different ways that... I know, I asked you to do whatever you're ready to do, because it is a good value.
Yes, Mrs. Cullen, it is. There's a number of services provided to both the school board members through educational programs and trainings, but also to the administrators within the district, publications, and different... Information coming out to administrators daily, weekly, monthly. There's also the policy service that is provided, which we use heavily to not only revise our policies, but to make sure that we get alerted to new things that come out, you know, in a timely manner in order then for the district to bring those policies to the Board for approval. So it really helps us in a lot of different areas in the district. And we also... The PSB also has an insurance program that the district utilizes for our general liability and general purpose insurance programs. And our local insurance agent uses that program to a great extent for us. Those programs always come back with the lowest costs to the district on an annual basis. We go out to the market every year. Each year, the PSBA program is the best value for us. So there's many different avenues that they help us.
We're going to make a video like Dr. Bolton did, and then we'll just play it each year so you know it's exciting again. But I mean, last year when you did the cost analysis, I remember being very close as far as, you know, all of the cost savings that we get from our membership, you know, to what we're spending and, you know, the substantial professional development that it offers for administration and board members, and the conferences, and safety, security, you know, everything. So it's been very useful. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries nine zero. Okay, next is the Approval of Bid Results. I will make a motion to accept and award bid results, A through E. Questions or comments for board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Okay, and the next is the Approval of the 2019-2020 General Fund Proposed Final Budget. I think we should do a roll call for this. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 General Fund Proposed Final Budget as presented on the PDE 2028 form. Revenues and expenditures are balanced at $141,513,253, and set the real estate tax rate at $135.255, which remains unchanged from the 2017-2018 and 2018-2019 fiscal years. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Rice. Any questions or comments from board members?
Mrs. Vanis Clemmons, if it is okay with the Board, I'd like to ask Mr. Dolber to just provide a couple highlights. There are a couple slides on your Board Doc Form. He's shared all of this information at previous times, but since you actually are voting on the budget, I just wanted to make sure to remind you of a few things. And so the slides, I think, are on the screen as well as in front of the board members. Mr. Dolber?
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. Thank you, members of the school board. Tonight, it brings me great pleasure to bring this budget to you. This budget is a culmination of a lot of work by a lot of people in the district. It started in the fall and continued up through, you know, this month. So this is a balanced budget. This is the first time since my arrival at Penrith that I've been able to present a completely balanced budget to the Board, and it's just, you know, tickle pink over. Again, yes, the expenditures and the revenues do match, $141.5 million this year. Our total budget expenditures are up 2.44%, and our total budget is up 2.88%. We're in our third consecutive year of no tax increase to our taxpayers in Penrith, which is another great thing for all the folks that live here. Real estate mortgage rates being at $135.255. Also happy to share with the public that we will have no new debt this year, and our debt payments will remain constant. And as Mrs. Vanis Clemmons has pointed out, and we showed in our finance meetings, that we have a goal of another five years to get through our current debt, and then our debt drops by half, down to about $6 million a year, and then another year it drops down to about $3 or $4 million for a few years, and it really then falls completely away. So the district is very close to being, in the next, you know, five to 10 years, the debt free, which is really exciting.
From the instructional side, this is Slide 3, Danny. We are increasing our middle school guidance services throughout the district. We are increasing our middle school gifted services throughout the district. We're adding three instructional coaches in the district, and we're adding elementary STEM classes this year. We're also increasing our instructional technology by adding additional laptops and iPads at both the middle and elementary level. And the last slide, some operational highlights from this year's budget. This year, we're able to begin transportation for kindergarten students one way. We're able to continue to fund our school bus replacement program. We started this program in 1617, was the first year we added dollars to the budget for school board replacement. And the Board has been very gracious to us each year since then. We've been able to maintain our funding level in the budget and continue to replace the school buses. And if you see these Penrith school buses out on the road, you can start to see the efforts of the Board, what the Board has done, because we're starting to get some pretty sharp open buses. It's really neat, it's really neat. So, but we're going to continue through that program, and we're going to work through, you know, we're still not there yet, as we saw at the finance meeting where the Board approved us to go out to bid. So we're going to go back and work on that, and we're going to bring some bids back to the Board in hopefully July for another set of new buses and have those buses in place hopefully by Christmas time. Our current six-year capital projects plan is 100% funded. It's another project that we worked very hard over the last six months on, and we have really set the district up in the capital projects area with a nice plan. As I said, it's fully funded, and we'll continue to work through that plan. And that was a lot of hard work last summer by Mrs. Vanis Clemmons and Katie Dolber, so thank you for that work, digital. This summer, we're doing a lot of work in the district. We're air conditioning all the large space areas and all the elementary buildings to really try to relieve some of that heat in the early fall and late spring, early summertime for those kids. We're going to be doing some extensive paving throughout the district and a lot of the buildings. We're also going to be doing some electrical work at Diver. We're going to do some concrete work. We're doing flooring work at Guth. We're doing window and masonry summer projects here at the high school. So there's going to be a lot of buildings touched this summer with some work, so we're excited about that. And we're also excited about the work. We're adding additional safety and security personnel in the district. So it's been a great budget process this year, and it's just been a great team effort, and we're really excited about it, so... Thank you for giving me an opportunity.
Thank you very much for all of your hard work. And going back to the school buses thing, I just want to highlight that Mr. Geiger and Mr. Dolber have this, you know, the system down pat now, where they go out to bid for the buses early enough that we get a better price than everybody else because of this planning and, you know, getting out there early so we make sure that we get the better pricing. And then obviously, by having the newer buses, our buses are safer for our students and our staff and, you know, and more cost effective because we don't have to be breaking down and all of the other issues that come along with that. So thank you so much for all of your hard work on that, too. Were there any other questions or comments? I saw you going at it.
I just say that this is the first budget vote, this is the proposed budget vote, and the budget will be available for public inspection for 30 days. We'll put it on our website. We will put it in the DAO office, and we'll advertise that, and then the Board will vote a second time at the June voting meeting. That'll be the final vote on the budgets.
Thank you very much. Okay, all the... Oh, we'll do a roll call?
Mrs. Vanis Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Koderi? Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Walters?
Yes.
And Dr. Yarness?
Yes.
Okay, passes nine zero. Okay, next is the IU report. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit Board met on Tuesday, April 16th. The next meeting is going to be on Wednesday. Actually, that's not accurate. It's not Wednesday, May 15th. It was moved back to the following week. Yeah, I believe it's the 22nd. And it's not in the regular location either, so we'll update the website because it's not at the... It's not at the intermediate unit in Doylestown this month. But just to share some highlights from the last meeting. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit entered its website into the Pennsylvania School Public Relations Association's Annual Digital Media Contest for media designed to provide an online presence to the public. Out of over 175 total entries and from the largest category of entries, we were honored to receive the highest honor of an Award of Excellence. Under the direction of Robin Gross, Educational Marketing Lead, the site's structure, design, content, images, and launch were managed with the support of an outside vendor. Robin proudly accepted the award at the annual Pensprah Symposium held in Chippensburg, PA. Also saved the date for the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Education Foundation's Annual Golf Classic on July 15th, and helped fund grants to support students through our intermediate unit. The Golf Classic takes place at the Doylestown Country Club. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit also shared a report on the success of the early childhood programs that provide high-quality preschool programming for the county's most, excuse me, at-risk children. Our programs fall under the umbrella of early childhood programs, preschool, early intervention, Head Start, early Head Start, and pre-K counts. All of these programs are designed to change the trajectory of lives of the children we serve. We partnered with the IU to house two of their pre-K counts classrooms here at Penrith, one at Diver and one at West Rock Hill. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit is also the host to the Region 8 Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness Program. Bucks County, Delaware County, Montgomery, Lehigh, and Northampton Counties are contained within the ECYDH Region 8, which includes more than 69 school districts and over 25 charter schools. This is also the region where more than 6,540 students are reported as experiencing homelessness during the 2018-2019 school year, with 636 of those students originating from Bucks County. This number represents over 2,300 more children and youth than in previous years, and there are still several more months left to report. One of the program goals for these most at-risk children and youth is to reduce barriers that inhibit the educational experiences and expose the children and youth to possible career choices. Regional Coordinator Michelle Connor and Regional Site Coordinator Kathy Versa, with support and collaboration with Dr. Lindsay Sides, Supervisor of STEAM Education, decided that providing learning opportunities focused on STEAM activities at four family shelters within Region 8 would be ideal. Each child who is residing at one of these homeless shelters is able to engage with STEAM activities, including coding... activities, including coding and engineering. The programs have been provided on four Saturdays, starting in March and concluding in May. Students are then given a project to take home to help solidify the skills they learned while they were there. So a lot of great things happening at the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. And again, we will update the website with the accurate date and time for the next meeting. And next, we have personnel. After your note.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee has not been since our last April board meeting, and certainly not in May. But I do have three motions tonight to bring the fourth board. Two of these have to do with the changes related to the budget positions. First of all, we have the three of the K to twelve supervisor prepositions that the administration has brought to us for appointment. Those include Mr. Howard Vogel as the K twelve mathematics supervisor, Ms. Dina Dormer as the K twelve science supervisor, and Mr. Pete Verberke as the K twelve supervisor of social studies. These folks will be effective June, sorry, July one, two thousand nineteen. Their salaries are listed as a hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred fifteen dollars for Mr. Vogel, a hundred eighteen thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-four cents for Ms. Dormer, and a hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars for Mr. Verberke. I make a motion that we approve these three K twelve supervisors.
Okay, questions or comments from board members? Okay, I'm excited to see the continuation of the curriculum up from the kindergarten level up through twelfth grade and the benefits that that will have and the extra instructional support that's coming to the classrooms to support our teachers and help implement the curriculum. So, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
The second item, second motion, has to do with the approval of three new elementary principal positions. This motion will have Mrs. Joan Coleza as the principal for Grass Elementary, Ms. Stephanie Washam as the principal of Bedminster Elementary, and Ms. Mia DePaolo as the principal of West Rock Hill Elementary. They're all effective July one, two thousand nineteen, and their salaries are all one hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars. I make a motion that we approve these three new principals.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? I'd like to congratulate Joan Coleza on becoming a new principal, and Mrs. DePaolo for her, you know, new journey ahead at West Rock Hill. And welcome back, Mrs. Washam, who we got to steal back from the chat room, so thank you very much. She was a huge part of pulling out our literacy initiative at the elementary school, so we're really excited to have her back. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
With those motions, I do want to introduce or reintroduce and at least recognize the three staff members who are here tonight. You asked them to stand so we can congratulate them and thank them for their work. First is Dr. Dina Dormer, who will, he is currently the secondary science supervisor, but as of July one, will become the K twelve supervisor. Ms. Joan Coleza, who will be the new principal of Grass, effective. That's where her children went, and she was interim principal there for two months? Three months?
About two and a half.
Two point six four months. And then Ms. Stephanie Washam, the principal of Bedminster Elementary. In fact, Ms. Washam was a student at Bedminster Elementary School and has already scoped out her fourth grade classroom where she, sorry, never mind. Congratulations to all three of you. Look forward to your work.
Last motion has to do with the approval of an agreement between the Penridge School District and employee number eight eight four one. I move that we approve this agreement.
Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
The next Personnel Committee is scheduled for Monday, June tenth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I know that, I personally know that everyone in the Science Department is really excited that they get to keep you, so. And the next up is policy. Ms. Kildare?
Okay. Last one, we're not responding to the ninth. Thank you. Policies, first reading following policies. I have made the motion to approve the first reading following policies. Policy one hundred twenty-four point two to enrollment, current enrollment, policy two fourteen, class rank, and policy number seven, school facilities.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Okay, there are no special official policy committees to render of the twenty nineteen school year.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Rice?
And here we are, technology. All right. All right, so I had something funny to say. Never doubt, it's technology, can't live without, right? Something like that, something funny. We had a good meeting. Mrs. Miller came, and she brought us some updates on some classroom management software. She's going to continue to run pilots through the end of the school year, and hopefully by, through the summer, through the end of the school year, we're going to have something for devices, for classroom management software. She gave us an update on device case update, little combination of accidental damage protection and, you know, the cost of the cases and stuff like that. So she gave us some updates on that, great video of all the details. And we also have some tools and integrations for the elementary teachers. All of the elementary teachers are going to be receiving an iPad, so they should be able to be on the same wavelength as their students. So that is awesome. Next technology meeting, a little week on. It's June tenth. Wow, June. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. And next is the Upper Bucks County Technical School, Mrs. Dolan.
Thank you. The Upper Bucks County Technical School met on Thursday, April eighteenth. Some highlights from that meeting, a lot where we mentioned by the time it gets to me. We had signing day up at Lehm, and eighteen students signed on to go to college within their programs. Megatronics took first place, a grand champion at the Roll Bowl competition. Last meeting, we approved opening of two new programs, HVAC and biosciences. Also, our food truck arrived. I got to see that today. It was really exciting. Jeff took me in, we checked out the food truck, and I believe today the guy was coming out to check, like, to see if it was prepped enough to put the wrap on, if it wasn't prepped enough. Our autobody students are going to, like, sand and paint and get it prepped to be wrapped. It was very nice. We'll see it Thursday, because our next meeting is Thursday. So the Student of the Month for April was Andrew Ruffin, and he is a Bigger Town student. We had a job fair, and it was very well attended. And also, now all the boards, Palisades, Bigger Town, us have voted on our budget, and it was approved. So those are the highlights from the tech school, and we'll meet again on Thursday, May sixteenth, and everyone's welcome to come there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Act Forty-eight, Mrs. Walters.
Okay, the Act Forty-eight committee did not meet in May, and we have no more scheduled Act Forty-eight committee meetings for the remainder of this school year, so see you again in the fall. Thank you.
And next is the Penridge Area Coordinating Committee, Ms. Thompson.
The Penridge Area Coordinating Committee met on April twenty-fifth. Just to give you some highlights, some updates from the various municipalities. Silverdale reported that the Borough's Green Street Project is underway. Sorry, it's more exciting than my head. It's a big deal. Day at Supple Park is June first. East Rock Hill reported that a conference hearing regarding the quarry's efforts to install an asbestos plant is scheduled for May seventeenth, and they have sought the assistance of State Senator Santa Cerro regarding the recent D E P recommendation to deal with the PFAS contamination issue. Perci reported that the annual golf festival will be October sixth, and Menlo Pool opens Memorial Day weekend. And also, they had a kids' umpire clinic, so that's exciting. A lot of really fun things going on. Also, Sellersville reported that the bridge construction on Main Street that is very close to the firehouse, near the Five Point intersection, is expected to be completed mid-June, but there are already pavings, so we think they'll probably be done by the end of the month. The railroad bridge, however, is going to close immediately after they're done. Sorry, folks. So, sorry. So good news and bad news. And Sellersville also wanted to report that the Memorial Day Parade is being held in Sellersville this year on May twenty-fifth, and the Holiday House Pool also, they reported, opens May twenty-sixth. And the meeting concluded at eight P M. The next meeting will be May twenty-third. Just for fun. At the Penridge Community Center at seven P M. Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
And unfortunately, I was hoping that we'd be able to get, the food truck is not going to be able to make Memorial Day, but I know there's several other events coming up in Perci that they're going to be able to make, so excited to see our food truck roll up for those. I think we're going to be, you know, putting some other food trucks out of business because they have pretty good food. Next is the Penridge Community Educational Foundation. Mrs. Cullen?
We'll have no fair fanfare. The P C E F met on May fourth. As Dr. Volton already mentioned, we had the evening event, a lovely evening, on April thirtieth, where the three teachers were honored. So you already mentioned that, so I'll just mention other highlights of the night. I really enjoyed each person's acceptance speech. I thought it was very entertaining, so don't miss it next year. It won't be the same people that went, but I'm sure they'll want to live up to that and have entertaining speeches as well. And Mr. Simkin stepped in, our physics teacher. He was the M C for the evening. He wore a tuxedo, and he really, you know, brought an air of class to the event, and he just had a great time doing it. He was very entertaining as well. So it was a great night, and our students performed beautifully as always. Their, you know, voices and their musical talents just also were bouncing around to the jazz band music. So it was a great night, and we received a thank, you know, I just got from one of the grants, the awardees of one of our grants. And so just remember that the P C E F, everything that you donate to them goes right into our classrooms, and it then benefits our students. So, and you can donate at any time on the website. The next meeting will be Saturday, June first, at eight thirty A M. in the Penn Community Bank across the street from Down to Earth Cafe.
Thank you. Next is old business. New business?
I have a little bit of new business. I just went to, I went to a meeting today of the Regional Adolescent Sleep Needs Coalition, which is a mouthful. Back in October, when Mrs. Vanis Clemens and I were at the school board's conference, there were members of the Radnor School Board and Radnor Administration that were trying to get a Senate bill to be on the floor to have a vote. And at the time, it wasn't on the agenda at all, and so they asked us to contact our representatives to ask them to vote on it that day, which we did, because it was just a bill to allow a study, allow the state to do a study of sleep needs, which then that information could be disseminated to all public schools, or I guess any school really, so that the schools wouldn't have to do the studies themselves. So we called, and it went from not being on the agenda to passing unanimously that night. So we were pretty excited about that. And I've kept in touch with the group. I've attended some of their meetings, and it has become, in our area, something that a lot of schools are exploring. So today, I happened to go to a meeting where they were celebrating Radnor's switch to it, and I just thought that I would give some information because I know that there has been discussion of it in the community here. There is updates on the Senate Bill five ninety-one in Pennsylvania, which is amending the pupil transportation distance requirements in the school code. They hope to amend the distance requirements from the current ten miles to only five miles. And they also mentioned some United States legislation, H R eighteen sixty-one, it's called the Z's to A's Act, and it's legislation, or it's legislation to direct the U S Secretary of Education to conduct a study to determine the relationship between school start times and adolescent health, well-being, and performance. So it was introduced in the House on March twenty-fifth, and it's been referred to the House Committee on Education. So I just thought I would pass on, kind of post it later, but since I know people are interested in it, there's a website called startschoollater.net, and it contains a lot of information about the research. So many schools have explored it, some have decided to do it, some have not. There's a lot of research behind it. Interestingly, they focused on mental health a lot. They know that it affects the student's mental health. So if you want to find more information about it, if you're interested in keeping up with the topic, as I said, you can go to startschoollater.net. I also have a lot of information that Radnor gave out today about their process. It's a long process, and it's not an easy process, so not that Penridge is currently talking about it, but people in the community have been talking about it, so I wanted to give those hopes and update on what's been happening.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Anybody else for new business? Okay, then we're back to questions and comments from guests. The same rules apply as before. Any questions or comments? See, none. Okay, announcements. An executive session will be held following tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. The next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand And I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is that good? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.